Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and call this meeting to order. Somebody make a motion, please, to excuse Dave for the Utena?
I will make that motion in a second.
Okay, seconded by Wes. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, next, Pledge of Allegiance, please.
Pledge of Allegiance, two to five, the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice strong.
Thank you.
I put six thirty-two as all meeting.
That's okay. Okay, you should have in front of you a set of minutes that were sent out. Everybody read them? Questions, comments, corrections?
Just the, which said that the forty-five seventy-three, uh, Franklin Street, property had been sold, it was not sold.
Oh, that's on John's report?
It's on.
It's on page three.
Yeah. She, she stated that it was sold, or?
Yeah.
Mary Ann. Oh, really, okay. Maybe she just wants some.
I'm glad we could give you a few moments of pleasure. Okay, is there a motion to approve?
As amended?
As amended.
As amended? Okay. Scott motion, Wes second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay. Right now, we have no citizens with us. Uh, zoning inspectors' report, you have that in front of you.
Scott.
Randy.
Call me whatever you want, doesn't matter anymore.
It's on tape.
Okay, so we're gonna amend the, the, uh, zoning inspector's report on forty-five seventy-three. And everything else is pretty cut and dried. Any questions, Mr. True?
I do, um, but not about your report. Well, yeah, I guess it is. Have you been contacted by tiers about the construction they're doing on that other house, John? Have you noticed? Because I didn't know anything about it until, like, two days ago. They're building something between the house and the garage. Like, they're connecting the house to the garage, there's the whole roof and involved and...
I knew it was roofed, and I didn't know there's any other construction.
Yeah, I think you might wanna take a drive-by and take a peek.
Actually, what I know is, remember that little bump out on the west side of the house? That was on the second floor? And they extended it all the way down to the bottom?
Okay.
Now, there's a man door there.
Oh, no, no, this is on the east side, though.
Oh, well, on the west side, they had to
Right.
support that upper level, and now they've extended it out, and there's a man door there now, too. And maybe he has building permits.
That's what I said, he would have probably building permits, because anyone with a foundation.
Right.
We are allowed up to two hundred square feet, long as it's not new foundation.
Okay.
Say it was a new porch or something like that, they don't need a building permit anymore for something that's small, but beyond that.
Okay. And he might, they might not be doing anything to the foundation, it might all be up, like, on the second floor. All I know is there was new rafters and
Yeah.
I can hear a nail gun firing away the other night. Yeah, just take a drive-by.
Yeah.
But what I, what I was told was on the east side, like, in between the house and the garage.
Between him and Bishop.
I remember the west side, but, yeah, this is...
I guess somebody actually applied for a permit for just the outside of the building.
No, this was roofed, this was rafters.
Coming out, and I didn't see if their cam was within or not, I called the building department, had semi-dimensions, I have that one on my desk, and that's a good thing.
Okay.
Samson's is the one I have, Samson's.
Just take a look, it might not be a big deal, they might, uh, maybe they're replacing some rotten rafters or something, I don't know. You know, it could be as easy as that.
Remind me, there's a board of zoning appeals that they went through. Didn't they, it was like a year or two ago?
That was for their fence and the porch or something.
Yeah, that was for that fence, yeah.
I knew they had lights, I wasn't sure if they were connected.
You're right, I forgot about that. But no, that's all, that's all I have. Like I said, I just, I was gonna call you the other day, and then I thought, I'll just leave it for planning, and you can take a look at it.
Okay, any other questions or comments? And I, I have noticed there's a, a, just, an abandoned vehicle on Harold Street, the second house north from Walnut on the east side. And I don't know the address, I just see it when I'm walking.
Abandoned, or?
Well, I mean, apparently, there's marriage issues, the house is having problems, and I was speaking to one of the neighbors, where it all came about, and there's a bunch of apparently rotten wood in the backyard. This guy's There, there, the neighbor was telling me there's an issue between, there, there was parents and kids involved here. Which we're living good used to live, next to your mom's.
Okay, so the second house up from Walnut?
Yes, on the east side. And it looks like it's been there a while, so...
Well, that would be a, a chief thing.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
I'll talk to the chief about that.
Okay, and then there, you know, we still have this vehicle issues down on Park Street.
Second house.
At Mr. Schubert's estate, I guess, is where that's gonna get tied up.
Oh, Mr. Schuber passed away.
Oh, yeah, what, a month ago?
Two months.
Schuber? Who's there?
Nobody.
He and his new wife had moved out of the house, and the mother-in-law was living there. And when he died, she packed everything up.
It just took off.
And took off.
And left everything there.
Yes. They made sure the water bill was paid at the time. And they have really cleaned up a lot of stuff, but there's still a lot there. And I don't know if Mary Ann has an address for them or not. She was gonna Well, I have a contact, so I, my contact called the, one of the brothers, and he was gonna call the, the widowed wife. And I don't know if Mary Ann has heard from you, and I'll have to ask that. Top of Park Street also.
Okay, any other questions for Mr. True?
Oh, did you hear back from Randy Roberts at one seven zero?
North, I hear.
First Street? We, we had two complainants about the friend house on First Street.
Okay.
Cause it's been up on blocks, and the basement's been dug out. And people were complaining about the trash, and, and allegedly, John's, well, John did speak to him about the trash, and he brought a bulldozer, or front-end loaders, and dug a hole and buried everything. So, one of the neighbors saw that, so...
Did they film it, or they photographed something?
There's building materials, that's what it was, it's bricks, et cetera. Mostly a clean bill that he was using to build, so it wasn't really trash, it just looks to the lady in the church house, that it was really trash junky. A lot of the building materials and stuff he was using around that property. So, there's just a difference of what trash looks like.
Yeah, exactly.
It's construction debris, but it would be clean landfill stuff.
But the biggest concern is the house being up on, there's nothing holding the house up but the blocks or whatever, while he's rebuilding the basement, it's been like that since twenty seventeen.
Took a
Yeah, it's been a while.
Yeah. Called Randy, said, "Take a look at it, I'll get you going." Said you can do a windshield inspection, you can see, obviously, it's unsafe. See if you can get it correct.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, any other questions? Moving on to new business. Uh, murals, section four fifty oh two and five oh two ten and eleven, for review, at the request of the BZA and Edie Benner. Anybody, any thoughts on it? What, do we wanna approach it, do something with it?
To remind me again, what, what was the issue? Uh, the?
The issue was, is that Edie sent John and I an email, and said that she and Jeff wanted to paint a mural on the wall.
Right.
And we said because of the size, she would need a variance.
Right.
And the variance price was, what, a hundred and fifty, two hundred dollars, whatever it is. And the BZA heard it, and they said that they would come to us, and Edie has sent us, does have copies of the emails that she has sent about it, that, uh, we're driving business out of town, yada, yada, yada. And it states right in there what it is. And so, it was, at the meeting that you weren't at, it was discussed that possibly we could do not-for-profit. And then the BZA chair said, "Well, it was the DMRC that did it," I said, "Well, that's not the way it was presented to us." The application did not say DMRC, it said Jeff and Edie.
Yeah.
And so, suggested that we charge them the, the fee, the whole fee upfront, and then deduct the cost out for the mailings and that, and Mary Ann taking the minutes, and reimburse the difference when it's a nonprofit organization. Right, right, we understand we have to amend it, but we, we have to make the amendment to council to consider.
And by, are we gonna define nonprofit at this point? Are we gonna say churches?
I, I think it's a five oh one C three, I mean, I think that
Okay, that's, that's
Yeah.
They've gotta have that form in their possession.
Right, but I mean, this application actually said Jeff and Edie Benner on it, it didn't have anything, say anything about the DMRC.
It was on private property.
And it was on private property.
The presumption is there that it's a private entity, not that
Right.
that the five oh one C three is doing it.
Right.
Well, we have another one that is going to be coming, they sent the application without a drawing, and we've sent it back and have not heard back from them yet. And that's, they wanna do one on the west side of town on, on the Restoration Forty-Four's building.
On, on the north side of the?
Yes.
It's gonna be a continuation, is that right?
I have no idea, I have not seen anything on it. Now, Dan Tillit, who was supposed to be here tonight, about another issue, told me that it had been turned into us, and I said, "I'll check with John," and we have not gotten it. We had the application, and Mary Ann gave it back to him, told him it was incomplete.
Yeah. Didn't have any drawings or anything else? Or sizes, or, besides, you can say the size of the wall, but still need to have some representation of what they're attempting to do.
Right, what it's gonna be.
We don't care about content, yet we just
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm fine, as long as it is a five oh one three C. And I suppose, do we have to specify, well, any property is private.
Five oh C threes can, can own property, they can be running a business inside, inside private property, but if they need a variance or whatever to run this business in location, then they would be the applicant.
Right, cause they're still gonna need a, a variance, because it's still gonna be oversized.
Right.
Are we gonna have a case where people are gonna be wanting to put murals up, and they're gonna have a nonprofit represent them, so that the fee is cut? We have that at the lodge all the time, we have, we have people that, that say it's the Manaway Garden Club, and they're really having a bridal shower. You know, so, I, I don't know, where do you draw the line?
Yeah, you have to be able to look through that and see what the, you know, facts are, before you actually go to the extent of trying to waive any fees.
I mean, I'm all for waiving the fees if it's a nonprofit and it meets our criteria and they, and stuff, we just don't wanna have.
And this is on your, is, this is for the murals specifically?
Yes.
I don't think we're gonna run up against too many of those. I don't think it matters.
Okay.
You don't think?
I mean, yeah.
We got walls facing the south. I don't know, I'm kinda concerned about that, but
Yeah.
I mean, let's not get mural happy here, you know? It's, it's hard to, listen, you know, on one hand, we get this, we're trying to maintain the historical value of our village, and then we're painting murals on buildings, so, I mean, you know?
Well, somebody's gonna come back and argue with you that all these historical buildings are
It doesn't say mail pouch, that it's
Same world I was in, yeah.
Yeah, it's that mail pouch on a dairy farm, or dairy barn, then, you know?
Right.
So, yeah, I'm, if it's a five oh one C three, I, I can see that.
Okay, how do, what, how do you want this written? So, go to Michelle.
Well, that means, tell me you, what I wrote for my neighbor, too, please. You wanna talk about something else while I'm looking up this?
No, cause then I have to take minutes, I don't wanna be taking minutes.
Yeah, well, I'll expand a little bit on that. The chair of the BZA thought that we should appoint, that council should appoint a citizen committee for review and oversight, and I don't think that's a good idea.
No, I think
I think it should stay right where it's at.
Yeah.
To maintain control.
This, this isn't about the, the government, you know?
Yeah.
And that, I think I heard that term thrown out there, and that's not what this more government or something, that's not what any of this is about. This is about, there's rules and regulations
Yeah.
that somebody a long time ago put a lot of thought and work into, and I think you were probably one of them, weren't you?
You know, we lucked out with this mural, but I am concerned that if we were
Right.
on the line.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean
Cause it represents the whole village regardless of where it's at.
Exactly.
Why should we say we lucked out, you know, it was, it was, you know, thought out and
It was thought out, right.
Were they actually submit a draft drawing?
Yes, that's what, that's what Edie did.
Okay, and, and that needs to be done.
Mm-hmm.
Right, no, they have to have a, a drawing to specs.
Any sign that we were seeing, we asked for signing colors, just for reference, so we know what it's gonna look like.
Right.
I know what I'm looking at, knowing what sign, however much I'm gonna measure it, and things like that, you know, that's all.
Hey, Randy?
Yes.
Okay. It would say something to the effect, "Council grants planning commission and the Board of Zoning Appeals as appropriate."
Do I have to write this down, or you're gonna have it?
"Authority to waive said fees in whole or in part for not-for-profit organizations or due to hardship, except that any actual costs incurred by the village in publicizing a hearing or processing an application shall be collected."
That was for murals?
For anything.
For anything.
For, for any board of zoning appeals hearing that had to do with five one C three or due to hardship, you know, adequate proof of a hardship, not just because it's a hardship.
Right.
Please with my fees. But, so that could also be for site plan review by planning, board of zoning appeals hearing, a conditional use permit by planning, so there's a lot of hearings that you have to hold that involve fees, but if it's a true hardship or a true not-for-profit, then you could waive all of the fees that don't go directly to an actual cost.
And, and where was that for, that you wrote that?
Gearsville.
Gearsville, just reference that in a minute.
So, what, how did, how did they handle it? They collect the fee, and then they back out everything that is
Yeah, the applicant writes a check.
Okay.
And we keep, they keep it on deposit
Right.
during a pendency, or alternately, if, if it's already pre-bifashia a not-for-profit that we're aware of, then they would just hold it in abeyance, collecting the fees until the planning commissioner or board of zoning appeals decides their hearing,
Okay.
whether or not to waive the part.
Now, on, as far as like the hardship, uh, what type of proof is required?
To be honest, I'm pretty sure we haven't had to actually use that portion.
Okay.
But I mean, you know, it would, maybe it would be, you know, I don't know, if you, if you really felt the need to show proof of income, I think that would really be the only way to do it. It's, it's by and large, it's been applied to not-for-profits.
Okay.
Anything fine with that, I don't mind, I mean
You'd like coverage?
Yeah.
As you
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I just, I, I, I like the idea of collecting the fee, though, and then backing it out
Yes.
as we need it, and then refund the rest.
Not depositing, just holding the check.
Yeah, just holding the check, and then, whatever it costs Mary Ann, Mary Ann's time, or whatever.
Yeah.
You know, we have to figure into that, we just back that out of it, and refund the rest.
That's your motion, yes?
Yes, ma'am.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? John, did you have anything to say on that? Did you?
Michelle wrote it.
Okay.
Let it be written.
So, let it be written, so let it be done.
Okay, Landmark Committee, um, again, did you, did you get the information they submitted on street? Post signs?
I remember seeing that, I remember getting a, I think it was an email from Moss.
Yeah.
Um, it was, I like our concrete ones personally, I think they, you know?
Well, there's a, there's a caveat in there, John, if you'll explain it.
Real quick?
The caveat's just that they're not breakaway concrete, and they can do a lot of damage to a car, and bodily harm or injury, especially some of the small cars that fire the last way out today. So, I wrote to ODOT and asked them what program they have, so we can maintain it, if we still have a breakaway-type post that represents the structure of our, um, concrete, it'll look like, some of our wooden ones that have been replicated, it'll be the same or similar, and would have to have reflective, like some of them have, where you can see it at night and everything else, because without seeing it, too, that's, that's a hazard, by the way, I knew even traffic codes also. So, I asked them, and that's what I had asked ODOT to respond.
And they haven't got back to you, and you had mentioned there, there's actually a specific height required now? In that, did you say seven feet?
Yeah, seven feet, that's, usually for sign codes, they have, well, seven feet, so you can pass under, the trucking nearby, and not hit normal trucking, so, yes. That's the highway, you work careful on the street lines when you put them up like this, you know?
Okay.
I mean, they, they, especially on forty-four, they do govern those on forty-four, but that's the same code we use.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Won't say they give us, so, I'm pretty, pretty sure they'll give us the blessing to some type of breakaway, or something that springs up, or something like that. Usually a wooden structure, sometimes, just like a mailbox post.
Yep.
Now, if they, if, okay, say, say they do that, okay, are we gonna have to submit to them some kind of design drawing, like, uh, they'd send us from that one company?
Yeah, they, from a, it was a concrete company that they sent. So, yeah, we have to see, or see what company they
Tough, tough precast.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's a precast concrete company, they're using.
So, I'll have to find a woodworker to do it.
Or if they, they can make some type of wood, and the, if it goes, fits over the top, you know, like a Ballard?
Yeah, exactly.
You have something that, often you have a wooden Ballard on, and they don't put a, a metal one, it'll be back, and it'll still break away, it's something to that nature, there's several different ways you can do it.
Well, yeah, and of course, we're gonna let them do their homework, um...
Right, I just put Johnson a letter to ODOT to request information on the breakaway, and would they approve it?
Okay, so my suggestion is, let's table this, until John hears back from ODOT.
Does anybody know any, yeah, I agree.
Okay.
I, I mean, I agree with that, I just, does anyone know the, uh, the guys that are at the Plastics? I wonder if they can duplicate one of those for us? Out of plastic and then put it on a wooden Ballard?
Well, Dwayne Valentine, I think, is, is he still there?
Because that would be ideal, if we could set a wooden post and then slip, slip a plastic sleeve over it, it looks like, cause I
Just like some of these spencers that you buy.
Yeah, just like those spencers, but tapered, you know, like our old concrete ones, I'd love those old posts.
We could recommend that to, to us when we respond to them.
I mean, I'm just thinking, you know, that's a hometown company, I mean, they, they might, they might be able to do something like that, you know?
So, what brought this to his attention, he said they were looking?
They did an inventory of all of them, and came up with that, that list.
And you know what, more power to them, boy, if they wanna
The list of where they are.
Spend the money to do that.
And apparently, it would be, I'm going to assume, it would be a DMRC fundraiser project, like the benches.
Like Jeff's? As soon as you go to replace it, that's when you run into the
New rules.
The new rules.
Right.
They, they can stand there for another hundred years, but as soon as you wanna replace it, then we're in trouble, so...
So, we're not under any liability now with the, I mean?
As far, I believe ODOT's position would be that their grandpa were in, because they were in long before the manual uniform traffic controls in existence.
They were probably nineteen thirty-nine?
Yeah, they're, they're from the thirties, they were
Yes, very well.
And you guys all have a copy of what Michelle had sent us regarding that, okay?
And basically, if they're hit, most of them fall over if you touch them.
Right.
Yeah, they're all
I noticed the one at the corner, high impact, there, there is no concrete anymore at, at the bottom, I think the only thing holding it up is probably the reinforcing rod.
And all the stones somebody's piled around.
Too, yeah, so, yeah, and then
I have one in my corner.
Yes.
It's doing pretty well.
Good, taking care of it.
Right?
And if they, if we do change them, I want, I want ours at the corner.
Yeah, I'd like mine, too.
I don't have one at ours any, at our corner anymore.
I would, I'd love it, I'd put it right at the edge of my driveway.
That'd be cool.
Driveway and sidewalk, that way nobody could hit it.
It'll be up for bid.
Oh, I'll just go take it. Thief in the night.
Did you get that on the meds?
No.
That, that, Mr. Weaver is gonna take it. Okay, we're gonna table that for further discussion until we hear back from District Four. Uh, Mr. DeBalkin also requested review of section six ten oh two, site plan review. They were aggravated with the investment and the number of prints of the properties that needed to be supplied.
I can see that, though.
I think we, we
I, you know, I, I would, I would say if you can provide it in a digital format, that would, I mean, that, that would at least satisfy me.
I would, I would, I would go along with that, as long as it's just residential.
Mm-hmm, right.
Commercial, industrial, we want it to full-blown.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I mean, for you and I, and Dave, and, and John will come over. I mean, the mayor needs one, John needs, you know, I mean, we need physical sets.
Right.
But you're right, I mean, there's four right there that, you know?
Well, yeah, because we, and, and
If we can get them digitally, right.
Yeah, cause Portage County soil and whatever gets one. Shade Tree gets one right now, that's not really necessary, if we have one in the, have one in the office.
Right.
CT gets one if it requires them to be involved in the site plan. And the only reason they would be involved in a site plan review is if it's in the floodplain, floodway, so we know that the elevations and all that stuff are correct. So, in some cases, it would be necessary for even residential, cause I had said to John, you know, is the DeBalkin property in the floodplain down there, and they are just out of it, so it wasn't necessary, otherwise, it would have had, it would have been five hundred dollars instead of
Right, right.
So...
See, I think, I, I'm with you, I mean, an E-file would be perfect.
Yeah.
You know, for the members.
Put that through, I mean, it's, it's digitally done, I would assume
Most, most of them do send them to John and I
I do.
ahead of time, uh, electronically.
So, the fire department needs a physical copy, right? I mean, do
I, he, I took a physical copy down to him, and he says when it's residential
Okay.
it doesn't usually matter.
Okay. So, then maybe we do need to
So, really, we're looking at you doing some changes with six ten zero five, that's talking, under specifically section B, that about fourteen copies.
Yeah.
I didn't get there yet.
That's okay, just says architectural plans, fourteen copies showing proposed structural improvements with exterior elevation, scale, proposed kind, color, the texture of all primary materials to be used, and detailed floor plan, so, we somehow or another, we wanna make like a B one. And, and define residential.
Right.
Are allowed to E-file or E, however you do that. Have you, have you ever?
Residential projects may submit electronic copies.
Yes.
All or?
No, not all.
No.
Because we don't have any control over some of them, yeah.
Right, so we have to like figure out.
What page are you on?
I am on page one six four.
Right. So what are we thinking, John? You and, you and the mayor, if you have one up here, that's really all you need, right? Does Joe need one downstairs?
Well, because we also have to have one in the office for any resident that wants to come in.
Okay.
So that one could be shared by the office, police, fire, you know, those people. John needs one, and I really don't. The mayor's office really doesn't need one, as long as she has access to, to John's or the one downstairs.
All right, so that's two.
We're, you were saying we want a copy for all committees involved, village committees, one for permanent file, one for the soil conservation. Who else? I forgot already. That was really about it, right?
Yeah, because, I mean, Shade Tree, if they need to look at it.
Depending on.
That's downstairs.
Yeah.
If it's downstairs.
I don't think that Shade Tree would even need to, unless there's, um.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what I said. You know, any, anything that would involve.
So four, I mean, would four copies be enough to do what we need to do?
I think three would be enough, unless it needs.
Unless it needs to go up to CT and then it's gone.
To go to CT.
Well, of course, they could, we could do them, they could get an E-file.
Yeah, sure, they could.
Yeah.
If they.
Yeah, exactly.
So small, the crowds sometimes, you know, you can go in and look at them.
Oh, yeah.
It's nice to have that all in front of you.
Well, yeah, that's my big problem, is it gets so busy that.
So if we said four.
If we said four.
Yeah.
Four full size.
Yeah.
The twenty-four by thirty-six. And the electronically sent to us, so we can.
Right.
Give them to everybody else.
Right. Now, if they, if they sent one electronically here, to you.
We could forward it.
You could just forward it to all of us.
Right.
So a lot of times, um, you know, during the meetings, we have them all rolled out here. Do you see any impact with that? I mean, I have, I'd know, I usually bring the computer, but during a site plan review.
We usually someone's role.
Right.
Well, that's why.
That would be number four.
I mean, we'd still have.
It would still leave us three.
We could, we could bring the one up from downstairs, because we, a lot of times we share, we'll have John's and the one for the mayor's. So if we have at least three up here.
It would be more than enough, yeah. Yeah, good. There.
Four, four paper packets and some electronic copies to who receives it? The inspector.
Somebody who's, yeah. Yeah, and then you could just forward it right on to all of us and.
Does that, my computer, they receive cats?
Okay.
Obviously, down, we don't have them.
Residential projects may submit four paper packets and submit electronic, electronically to filming inspector or distribution to.
I assume it's on a PDF form, uh, form. That.
They usually do.
They usually do, but if they send a CAD, I can switch to PDF.
Okay.
Oh.
You want sure? I can, I can specify PDF.
Yeah, why don't we?
Make a PDF.
I think there was also a, uh, comment or question on.
Okay.
Engineering stamp.
Oh, I, I still believe we say an engineering stamp, it has to have an engineering stamp. I don't care if Randy doesn't.
Totally agree.
Randy doesn't, if the Portage County Building Department doesn't find it's necessary, that's them.
Yeah. No, I, I'm on the same page as you, and I don't know when the Portage County changed that, because they, they used to.
Most cities do. I worked as a building inspector, we required it. That way you keep people from drawing their own housing plans.
Yeah.
Somebody draws their own house, but does have at least an architectural stamp review.
Right.
You know it's guaranteed errors and omissions. If not, then we're gonna have to send it out and get that five hundred dollar fee from engineering.
Right.
It saves them money in the long, I mean, I don't know what, mostly times they're stamped or, or plans that somebody else drew up anyway, so it's just a replication guaranteeing there.
Yeah.
It's cheaper to do that one for them, in all reality.
I just wanted to make, bring that up.
Is that actually, you know, I don't remember reading that anywhere in here.
Yeah, it's in.
We're requiring an engineering stamp on, on the prints, on, on the, sorry, on the plans. Okay?
Yeah, I think they added years ago.
Oh, okay.
Because on the, is it the enumeration actually on the permit?
I think it's in the requirements of site plan.
Site plan review.
Yeah.
I'm looking at oh four, or oh five right now, which is, is a site plan requirement.
It's number fourteen, professional engineer architect seal on the plan.
Okay, there you go. So it's there. So if they've performed due diligence, they would know that it is required.
Okay, so we're not gonna make any changes if they're commercial. It still stands.
So it's just residential projects.
Residential.
Right.
Okay, so, do we have a motion to send to council to change six ten point oh five in site plan requirements to be residential, four full-size paper copies, twenty-four by thirty-six, and the other ten copies, well, the other copy electronically, PDF, to the village administrator. Zoning inspector, sorry. No change in commercial.
So move second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Okay.
Okay, six ten, sorry, John, six ten oh five.
Fourteen stands. That's what you.
But it's gonna be, it's gonna be E, 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 E. So it is E fourteen. I make a motion, no change.
On which one?
Six ten oh five, E, number fourteen.
I, I don't know that we need a motion for no change. We're, we're just not gonna.
This way we have something on the record that we address.
It'll be.
Second then.
It's gonna be in the minutes, so.
It's gonna, it's in the minutes.
It's six ten oh five C, isn't Charlie? All right?
Yeah.
No, it's.
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I saw this E down here.
Very top, yeah.
So that.
Yeah.
So it's C fourteen. No change. All ayes?
Aye.
Sorry, Chair.
You might think it's complicated.
I just wanted to make sure we got it in there.
Okay, any other discussion on that particular business?
Not till the next time.
There you go.
Step one, so, you know, I mean, we just simplified.
I mean, it's gonna have to go three readings for council.
Yeah.
How often do we get anything for council to approve?
Oh, they'll approve this.
Yeah. They might even want to retro.
Somebody bring that up.
You didn't say that.
Yeah. I want that in the minutes.
Yeah.
Four fifty oh nine.
Okay, yeah. Eddie Benner had requested a review of four fifty oh nine on lighted signage.
Does everybody still have her email? Does anybody need to review it?
Is there?
Mm-hmm. She kinda rambled, jumped around a little bit, so that was a little confusing, but. Is that the right section? I don't see the mural stamp jumping out at me.
Murals is four fifty oh two.
Oh, sorry. Mine had the murals, even though we're talking about lights. I guess if we become too concerned about addressing this, my, my question is, is we have so many signs that are lighted signs now, starting with the school. UH. Circle K. Uh, the gas station. Going down the street, sorry. Then we have Jake's on Prospect Street, we have McDonald's, then we have Perfect Choice. Which one did I miss? I originally come up with eleven names of lighted signs. So, I don't know.
Dollar General didn't buy that parking lot, did they?
We don't know yet. We have only been, John has only been called with requests on sewer tie-ins, setbacks. Would they be able to put a nine thousand square foot building up? I did speak with Phil Raff. He had signed an agreement with a, an attorney's firm to a certain dollar amount, but it has still not been divulged to him who or what.
And they kept on poking, spoke to me and CT enough that we finally said, hey, we don't know who or what you are, or what you're fishing for. I need design plans, I need specifications, I need to see what type of building you wanna put it, before I determine sewer tie-in, water tie-in, et cetera. We were helping them bend over backwards, because we wanna get to whatever type of development it is, but there was a lot of fishing without any, you know, it, it got to the point where it wasn't fruitful conversation for us or them to continue it. So submit something to us, and they were still interested, but they said they'd get back to us once they solidified the deal.
And I, I, I haven't talked to Phil in a month about it, so.
I'm glad you brought that up, because I thought it was over. I thought, you know, I, I, something you said, I don't know, last meeting or something, made me think that that was, that it wasn't gonna happen.
No, they, they haven't got back to us, so we don't know.
Okay, Fairport Harbor. The little village of Fairport Harbor allowed a Dollar General to go in, and you should see it. It looks nothing like a Dollar General.
Really?
Looks like an old hardware store. It's cool as hell. And it's not in the village, it's like going into the village. You should see if you can find it. It's, it doesn't look anything like a Dollar General.
Well, I'm sure, I'm sure that they would read, meet our criteria of what we would want.
And I meant to tell you that. I just saw it last weekend.
But we don't have any criteria.
Yeah, there's no criteria.
Right, but I, okay. The phone call that I received was, we don't want a metal building in town with the big bright letters. And I said, well, the one in Shaler'sville has a brick front facade. I'm sure that we could get that same kind with different, a different sign.
Yeah, this is like a brick building with a pitched roof, and, I mean, it's totally different. Because when I drove by it, I, I just kinda looked over and I was like, God, I gotta tell John about that.
Corporate, you know, McDonald's, if you push a little back, they tend to give with the company, with the, you know, community standards.
Yeah, I don't know how much difference in price, you know, something like that would be, but if they really wanted to put it in there.
Right.
I guess they bent and did it, so. But, yeah, it doesn't look like your typical Dollar General at all. I was shocked.
And I, and I think the possibility of a Dollar General sign in town is what prompted, I don't know.
No, I'm sure. Like you said, you can go through column. Is there eleven on these stairs? Did you find it?
On Google Maps, it just has the, the amount of.
Oh. Yeah, the thing looks brand new. I mean, it looks like it.
I had them on a list that I, I read them off to you one day.
Did have the sign on.
Well, UH's is not freestanding. It's attached.
Do you know, well, we were going to Sunset.
Lighted, lighted.
It's, uh.
Because, because we had the neighbors across.
Can't remember the name of the road.
The majors across the street don't like it at night because of the light from that sign.
Where, uh.
So, school.
You go past the ice cream shop and the bait shop and then the road wise.
Sound like Big Road or something?
Yeah, it's, it's off to the right. It's not what goes. I can't remember the name of the road. But, yeah, it's, like you said, it might not even have been open, it might have just been built, but it looked really.
Well, it's.
It would have fit in the village perfectly.
Let's, let's get back on track and finish up this signage thing first. Um, I think, I mentioned, you, you know, we, we could do lumens, you know, I mean, the, the signs themselves are not huge. Anything else is gonna, anything over that twelve-foot maximum, it's still gonna meet a square footage. So, you know, we, we can, if they wanna file an appeal zoning, anything more, border zoning appeals can say, okay, but this may, this, this is as bright as it can be, and maybe wanna think about, okay, after normal business hours, after ten o'clock at night, it's on a timer and shut down. That's, that's how the high school used to do it, before they put the new sign up. It used to go off at midnight and come back on at six in the morning. And I don't know if they still have that option since they got that new sign, but I mean, we could always throw something like that. If, if it's in a residential area, I don't know.
Well, can't we say no signs? Oh, they already have a, a sign height. What is the sign height requirement?
Maximum twelve feet on a freestanding, on a freestanding sign.
Yeah.
And I assume that that's what we were, she was talking about, because she meant she referenced twelve feet.
Right.
So that's the only thing I can see that it would be. Because you've got like the pharmacy sign, it's, you know, it's freestanding, but it's, it's frontlit with floodlights.
Right.
Versus backlighting or something like that.
I always thought that we couldn't do internal lighting for some reason. I thought that was in the code.
What was it? Trailing lighting or flashing lights, we weren't, was in the code.
Yeah, the rotating flashing ones.
Right.
If they were stationary.
But, yeah, if they were stationary.
This must be what I'm thinking. External light sources such as goose neck lights and historical method of lighting signs preferred over internally illuminated signs.
Yeah, the coffee shops, perfect, you know, I mean, everything about the sign, the sign, the way they light it, everything. But.
I wouldn't mind if we had no more internally illuminated signs moving forward. That might be a good idea.
How would that work? I mean, what happens when they come back, say, well, you know, in, in your, in your little village, so-and-so's got one, so-and-so, I mean, is there, is that gonna?
Sure do, but that was before the law changed. I mean, I think.
Yeah, that's the thing. Yeah, that's the thing.
Yeah, maybe I draw the line in the sand somewhere, just say, you know, we're not gonna have anymore.
Oh, and the Napa store, because they finally put up there.
I'm kinda on board with, with no lit signs, but I mean, you just look at what we have. You know, what happens when somebody needs to replace one of those, are you gonna tell them they can't? You know, like if UH needs to replace their big.
Yeah. Once that bulb burns out.
Well, we have provisions for repair of non-conforming uses. All the, all the internally illuminated ones that are in existence now would become non-conforming when you add your.
Cease, says what, six months?
Yeah, I don't know, it's another section, I mean, I can find it, but it's kind of hard to pull out, maybe even people with books can.
Oh, what is it, what are we looking for?
Non-conforming uses, how, to what extent they can be rehabilitated or repaired once.
Well, I suppose like, your, your reference to the, the UH sign, there's a, you know, there's, under the, it's on page one twenty-one, under four fifty oh seven C, there's illumination of signs, and it starts saying that shouldn't be too bright, shouldn't cause glare, blah, 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 if somebody's got a problem with it.
What page are you on?
I'm on page one twenty-one. Whenever external illumination is used for a sign, the source of light should be located, shielded, and directed in such a manner that the light does not shine or cause glare onto any surrounding public street or private residence.
Your one twenty-one is different than mine. What section are you in?
Four fifty oh seven. It says, excuse me, the lighting of any sign, whether resulting from external or internal illumination shall not be of such brightness so as to cause glare that is hazardous or nuisance to pedestrian or vehicles or traffic.
Well, it sounds like it's already addressed.
Kind of, it, it's terribly gray, you know, that, that's why I'm saying, okay, maybe we need to specify, and, and I'm not smart enough to do that. How bright can a sign be? I mean, the object of it is just to make it visible. I mean, I can remember when Janson Brothers first went in and they got the store got brought, broken into, and that outside light that they put up on the building was, I mean, coming, coming north on forty-four could blind you. It was that bright, you know, so, and that doesn't even cover anything like that, so, but that's what they're trying to get away with, I think, in that illumination of sign.
Well, a Dollar General sign wouldn't, not such a Dollar General, a big box store like that, their sign wouldn't conform as it is. Being double sided, it would be truly well above our standard.
Well, hopefully they would, if a big box store was coming into town, they would be amenable to suggestions, kinda like Middlefield was.
They did, in that email, she did note those twelve parking lot signs. I, I, I got a lot of complaints about that just in general. I don't know, I thought it was kinda ridiculous myself, too. Their employee-only parking in every single space in Middlefield Bank?
No, they don't all say that, some say.
Do they?
Yeah, they're not all employee parking.
It does look kind of obnoxious. I mean, if you're gonna put something in each space, just have one big thing on the front that says, you know.
I have a feeling that that might have been done because that was the catch-all place to, you know, like, most of their, their banking facilities, the parking is in the rear and not on the main street and where.
Was it, was it in the site plan? All those signs were.
And it was, I mean, the parking lot when the bank was not there was full all the time with.
Car lot.
Italianos and.
Italianos employees.
And, and then Restoration Forty-four also.
I get it, then perhaps you put something on pavement that says employee parking as opposed to all the other signs.
I, I thought it said Middlefield Banking Customer Parking on most of them.
Yeah, well, it could just as easily say it on the pavement as a sign.
Yeah, I've been in, in there, I've just gone through the draft, so I never read the signs.
And we may need to, um, put more, um, aggressive language as opposed to, uh, like similar structures. Do you know what I mean? Cause we don't, I mean, that's very, um.
Where are we at on that one, Wes?
I forget what actual term is it. Oh, it's compatible.
Non-conforming signs are in four fifty fourteen D.
Four fifty what?
Four fifty point one four D.
G, I'm sorry.
D is in dog.
D is in dog.
I think, I think that this, from four fifty oh nine to, I think we need to go through signage again and look at the lighted.
And I believe they'll also address, um, ensuring that the properties or the builders are compatible or in, in theme with historic, um, nature. I don't know how to phrase it, um.
Well, do we just, do we need to next month just go over the signs again?
Well, I'm not even talking about signs, I'm talking about building in general.
Here, here was the conversation, and I don't mean to interrupt you, Wes. But I received a call of somebody screaming at me about the dollar store that we don't even know is happening. And what I said to them was, is I, they were going on about the metal buildings, and I said, well, Fallen Steppers have a metal building, and it's very attractive. And they said, oh, yeah. I said, and then we have the Napa store that's a metal building, and they said, oh, well, that's at the end of town. I said, no, that's at the beginning of town. And I said, and you were one of the supporters that sat out in this audience for them to have what they wanted to have. And I said, and now another business might be coming in to bring tax dollars to the village, and you don't wanna have it, because it's a metal building with a big yellow light possibly. I said, what, what do you think about the hardware store? Said the hardware store is right next to it, well, that needs a lot of work, too. So it's, it's a pick and choose thing with a lot of these people, and that's what upsets me is, as long as it's a local person that is wanting to bring business into town, we're gonna support what they want, no matter what it is, and if it's an outsider coming, and, and that's where I have my issue, because a, a big box type store coming in there is going to be, be bringing in some revenue.
Because you're, yeah, I mean, you should, that should, that should offend you, because on this hand, we're told that we run business out of the village, and on this hand, you can't let business into the village because somebody's gonna complain about it.
Right.
So, you can't keep everybody happy.
So, so I understand what, what you're saying, Wes, that we need to put, the thing is, we have no historic district in the village except the small block of Prospect Street. Main Street is not on it. We've put, worked very hard, many people worked very hard on this landmark commission because we received letters from all these people, and what, there were ten or twelve people that signed that once you get this in place, we're gonna sign up our property, and not one of those people, not one have signed up their property. Now, Jody has tried to get her building, the Little Market, and because it's been changed so much, she'll never be eligible. But not one person, I don't even know why we have a landmark commission sometimes, because this was, we just have to do this, move forward, move forward, and not one of them have, have done anything. So I, I don't know. I mean, it would be nice once we discuss what Dan Tillet wanted, you know, to make it more historic looking and be cohesive, I understand that.
Why can't we make that historic? Or at least, if you're going to be within these boundaries, you need to adhere to these rules.
You can, it's a big project. I mean, look at some other municipalities that have similar things like preservation districts, they're very long, very involved. It's not that you can't do it.
Longer than the landmark chapter?
Yeah. Yeah, they're long.
I mean, I, I thought it would be a done deal, the way all these people supported that. And, and even their chair, when their chair was, uh, I can't think of his name, because he's not chairing anymore, too, this is the chair that. Yeah.
Can't think of his first name.
Ellard? But Nick, Nick Ellard, he even went back to all these people, I gave him copies of all the signatures with the letters that these people signed. And he got no response, so, I don't know.
Well, I think at least the main strip should have high standards.
Well, I mean, forty-four restoration, forty-four restoration has, has mirrored. Right. So.
Forty-four restorations did it right. I don't even know, so I'm not, I mean, I'm not honing their horn for them. But they did it right, they did a very nice job, it, it fits right in, especially in that area, it fits perfectly. And if we could get everybody else to have the same mindset that they do, you know, then we could pull that off, but.
Did you guys all get the picture I, that I had sent you? The now of Main Street on the east side? And the proposed of what they want to do to Main Street on the east side? Here it is in color.
Again, there's, there's two sides to this thing, I think it looks great, it's a great idea, but it's not historic, the historic walkway is down there right now. It's not as proposed, so where do you make that, the break, that, you know, you know what I mean?
Colliniation. Colliniation?
Yeah, that, nice job. Colliniation.
You don't think you use that word very much, delineation, I said, you don't use that word that much in everyday speak?
And if you had had the time to read the letter and his proposal, and he was supposed to be here to give it to us, and again, the estimate of the work is, on just the first part is a hundred and eighty, that's not engineering, that's not permits, that's, and he has, as you can see, reached out so far to Todd Pizza Regional Planning, looking for funding that the village would have to pass legislation on unless it was privately funded by NDS or something like that. You probably have more information on that kind of thing.
There's something you see in G dollars alone, that was, something like that, but for the counter, you can, you know, might be a few, but that's, you know, those CBG, certain criteria, and then there's so much percentage of interest, that's all private, and you still have the sidewalk, the public part of it.
Right.
And the water lines and shut offs and, and the old buried underneath, and that becomes a public project. Expensive project, that.
And just like the parking lot that was a good idea in the back of those buildings, the village cannot develop private property. And they own the sidewalk in the front down to the bottom step.
They own from the bottom step up to the building.
Right, from the bottom step up to the building.
Right, the only part that's village right of ways is sidewalk, sidewalk, and that's not even part of the proposal.
How did you get in?
If you need to see me?
Well, it's a beautiful idea.
It is. And I'm sure that, I'm sure that Village Council would approve them doing this with their own funding.
With their own funding.
I don't know how we could fund it for.
But that's what they're looking for.
Yeah, I, I was just curious of the very first line, we are proposing, who's we? You know? You know, it's my understanding that, uh, the Restoration Forty-four group has bought Schaefer's Market.
And the old Keith Barton building, too.
Well, that's part, I consider that part of the market, because they, they opened up a wall in there anyhow.
Yes.
So I just include that.
So, they, well, they, they bought King Cave, right, and then what's the other building?
They milk, immediately north.
Yes.
You know how they opened the wall?
Keith Barton's lawyer office was? Okay, Jeff Benner owned that, and he sold that.
So, so I understand their, their motivation to get that side of the street looking as good as they made the other side.
Oh, absolutely.
I, I get that, but, um.
I mean, I did reach out to AMATs because they do sidewalks at times. And he said, well, that appears to be private.
Right.
Probably, so, no, it wouldn't.
Right, right.
Well, I guess there's not much that's talked about until Mr. Tillet shows up and.
Right.
Yeah, exactly, you're right.
I mean, I wrote down the name, date and the name or time of the meeting, so. So basically, short discussion on hold till Dan comes. Unless you wanna talk to him and tell him, we'll wait till he's here. Where are we at?
Okay, uh, we're done, is there any other new business anybody needs to bring up?
No, but we are gonna have to address the, um, historical, conformant historical district through that, uh, the main street. I'll look into it, I mean, I'll dive in and see what we have already, and I know the whole grading scale, I mean, it's never implemented, or never actually is.
Look at your, your whole site planner, your chapter, you're right, Wes, has lots and lots of criteria that you could apply to really, you know, clamp down on new developments in that area. I think some of the stuff that you already have in place is probably suited for, suited for the purpose you're looking for.
I just wanna see how, um, not restrictive it is, but what we're able to accomplish with it. Maybe we can just dive into that next, next month.
Well, what do we wanna do about lighted signs, do we wanna tackle it, or do we?
I think it needs to be addressed.
Yeah, we can take a look at that whole section and come back with ideas.
Okay.
It's not something we wanna go, I don't think we wanna go through page by page here tonight, or any other time.
And I think we need to be, all of us need to be here, I mean, Dave needs to be here and put in his two cents and that, you know.
You know, you hear a lot of people say. You know, you hear a lot of people say that we're not a Chagrin Falls, and we don't want to, like, you know, work in that direction. We're Manaway, and we should be happy to be Manaway, but I, I think that we should start stepping in that direction.
Well, we have to start stepping somewhere.
Yeah.
Can't keep going back.
I mean, this, this is, this is more Chagrin Falls. I mean, this is what I'd like to see up and down, but. So I, I don't think we can be content as Manaway.
No, but that, that really would be nice if they could do that, to have, they probably want to have some tables up there. What I have heard is the hole-in-the-wall area is going to be having tables and benches and stuff in there.
The village just can't fund that, you know? I mean, that's the problem. You know, we can't. Yeah. There's not enough of us left.
Right.
In this village, that, you know, and I just keep seeing for sale signs going up, and it's like, there's just not enough, enough people here to fund it.
Mm-hmm.
Right.
Okay, we're gonna move on to old business, work on the fee for rental inspections.
Can we table that? Because I didn't have a chance to have, get ahold of him.
Okay. Any problems with that, gentlemen?
No.
Okay, continue working on Maintenance Code forty-twelve. Review all sections. We had stopped at four eighty-twelve. We're gonna go at that tonight.
Wait till, um.
Wait till Dave's here?
Yeah.
Okay, so we will table that also.
We'll just strategically always have one person listen.
Yeah.
We've already been here an hour and a half, almost.
Okay, Orchard Street Whining had to be rebid. Apparently, there were no bids?
The bids were overpriced.
Overpriced. They were over fifty thousand.
Okay.
Fifty-five and sixty-two.
The bids are supposed to be submitted by the.
Seventeenth.
Seventeenth.
What, what was the engineer's estimate on that?
Total.
Was there one?
Total, without the engineering prices, is, it was supposed to be forty-eight, so, and the total grant and match was sixty-four. That, the sixty-four included the engineering. The lowest bid, including the engineering, came in at fifty-five, and the second one was sixty.
It's a, it's a, versus.
Yeah.
That's one. Sixty-two was ninety-five.
And why were those issues?
They were just quotes. They weren't bids.
Because it, when the, if the quotes came in over fifty thousand dollars, it had to be bid, not just quotes. We cannot award a contract for anything over fifty thousand dollars.
Oh, okay. Well, when I see something that says had to be rebid, I assumed it was bid in the beginning.
That's not true. Not rebid, it had to be, it had to be bid. It was like, it was only.
It was wrong word. It had to be, go from quotes to bid.
Okay. So you had an RFQ.
Correct, yeah.
Right.
Which is an acronym for Request for Quotes. So it's not allowed to use acronyms anymore. Okay, got that. Okay. And July seventeenth, you said, which is this Friday? Okay. Mathroad Bridge.
Don't, everything with, with the state on, on funding and that has just been put on hold.
And, and we'll not see too much funding, I don't think, new funding coming out of the state.
No.
You know, they're talking about, they're, he's finally tapping into the rainy day fund, and it's gonna be empty, and it's gonna go lower than whoever it was with eighty-seven cents or whatever, whatever governor that was. So, so that's gonna be tough, a tough road to hoe. Okay, and then, so any maintenance issues? You see some resolution going on?
Well, John, that was in John's report. He addressed that, where all those were. What I do with that?
Do we, do we know what's going on with the outside maple? Have you gotten any feedback? They closed it up, cleaned it up?
Chief?
I did speak to the gentleman who's doing the work up there. He's a contractor for the person who's working for the bank.
Okay.
And the bank, for some reason, has allocated some money to work on it. So he's got it closed up, boarded up, working on the fence, working in the backyard. It's, he's maintaining it. I've got his information downstairs, and.
But it's the bank, not, not the.
Exactly.
I, if he wants work, I'm not stopping him.
Right, that's where I'm at.
From, I don't know, but the bank has released some of this money to be able to allow him to do that, so we're letting him have that.
Shock.
But it, but it's not the company that I've been dealing with for three years.
So the mortgage got sold to someone else and yada, yada, yada?
I don't know. And I ha, I just haven't had time to, since I've cut my hours back, I haven't had time to contact them.
Kind of cleaned up. I'm sure the neighbors are out there.
Oh, yeah.
Should be.
Yeah.
Yeah, it looks better already.
Yeah, it does.
Good.
Great.
Okay, any other business for, anybody wants to bring up tonight?
Oh, um, temporary signage on the front of the old school. There's like a T L X banner out front.
Oh, thank you to the truckers or something, or employees, yeah.
Is there a point there?
We don't allow them.
We allow them for thirty days.
Yeah, I mean, he can probably take it down, take a picture, let it down, put it back up, and earn another thirty days, I guess, but, you know, short of that, he has to take it down.
But they're thanking the truckers that keep working during the pandemic.
I appreciate it, too. I mean, those truckers tear up our roads like nobody else.
Does that mean the, the sign board that, that Dean Stevan has out in front of his business thanking people that's been there for over thirty days?
Thanks to all first responders.
Yes, needs to come down and go back up?
We, we probably should address something in zoning code then. I don't know. I mean, unless it's a heartfelt, uh, thank you, thirty days, but unless we.
I think we'd be hard pressed to win that battle, Wes, right now.
I mean, I think if. So when the second wave comes, it's up for six months, or eight months, or nine months, then, then we address it.
Well, there's been a Bernie Sanders sign in front of old Doc Knowlton's house for six months.
And there's been Trump sign for over thirty days across the street.
We haven't done anything about that.
Yeah, those are there. Those should be addressed, too. You're right.
I mean, I do have a soft spot in my heart for the truckers. It's just that, uh.
No, I, I know what you're saying, because I'm, those things don't go without notice, and it's sometimes, pick your battles, Linda. Pick your battles. And now that you have brought it to the forefront, besides my seeing it, it may be a friendly call to let them know, God, we really appreciate the sign being there. Could you drop it down for twenty-four hours and tie it back up?
We can't tell them how to cheat.
Why not? Might as well be honest with them.
Flip it to the inside and flip it over.
I like that solution. Just turn it around. Flip it.
Maybe it's a double-sided.
Yeah, I, I think that you just, the phrase that you just said, Linda, I think is.
Pick our battles?
Pretty telling. Pick your battles wisely.
And that, right now, I mean, yeah.
Well, that's it. It's just right, I mean, right now. Any other time.
If, if you want to leave it up, that's fine. It's just that, uh.
Any other time, I'd be on board with it. I really would. You know that. I mean, you complained.
Hey, I let that thing stay up there for, how long has it been up there?
It's been up there a long time.
It's been up there well over thirty days, three months, so. I, I was patient three times longer than I should have been.
For you, for you, it was very patient, yeah. No, I, I understand.
Like, on the first thirty days.
I know. And, and, well, I, I, I understand what you're saying, because we have the rules. And, and should I be the hardcore person and say, that's what the book says, John, take care of it? If that's what you want me to do.
I know.
If you.
I can't, I, I can ask you to do that.
If this were, if it were a year ago.
Yeah, then I would.
I'd say, yeah.
Okay, so.
In a heartbeat.
Then, then let, let's set something. If it's up at the end of August, is it sufficient at that point to say? Because it, is it, is it an advertisement? Because it says the name of the company. It's not just thank you truckers, right? It's the name of the company and on down the line.
Doesn't the one at Paul and Stevins say F and S, thanks to first responders, or does?
I don't remember.
I think it's just thank you all, we saw you, we saw you, or something. I don't think it's an advertisement. In the past, if somebody's advertising for their business or company, we've addressed it and made them remove it.
Right.
Yeah, I just, I, I. Or if they've put up now hiring or any kind of.
Right, because we would have, we would have addressed that.
Yeah, we pulled those down.
Right. Well, I think signage, if it has a company's name on it, it's advertised, in my personal opinion. But if we want to wait to, I will revisit this at the end of August.
Okay.
At the September meeting. And at that point, I think we thanked them enough, my personal belief. Because everybody who would have driven past and been thanked has already driven past.
Okay. Anything else? Where's your adjournment?
So who?
Second.
Good night.
Seven fifteen four?
Four, three, four.